I'm not exactly sure when, but October, September, October last year, we tabled an item in regards to HR and a revised policy.
Northern Plains Engineering Recommendation.
We need to approve.
For the approval.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any more ratifications?
Want to ask?
Mr. Zander or Commissioner Zander, what policy are we talking about?
Well, it was, I don't remember the specific item. Is it the 349 and change plus the 335? Because the new one is smaller.
No, the new one is 349, I think. What was the original one? Oh, the original one.
So then...
I'm sorry, the resolution. And then we have the bills continued. And so the bills continued. The old one was 331 and the new one is 335. So 4,000.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm not following because the one I got in the packets is 349, 967, 33.
That's for the resolution. We're talking about the bills continued.
They are.
So you'd have to go farther on because it's the resolution plus the bills continued.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any more questions on the bills? If not, may I have a motion? To approve the bills and the continued bills.
Madam Chairman, I'll move to approve the bills as presented in the resolution record and the continued cover page. Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
We should do a... Oh, I'm sorry. I interrupted you.
That's okay.
Excuse me.
It's okay. Commissioner Messer.
Again, I...
Okay, Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried. The county, Stark County Spirit of Excellence Award, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Julie Obergevich and I'm coming forward today with another recipient that we recently awarded with the Stark County Spirit of Excellence Award. As you know, as previously mentioned, we've been doing the Stark County Spirit of Excellence Awards since last year. We did six awards last year. This year, we are doing four. The mayor selects the recipient through a blind process in the categories of leadership, customer service, innovation, stewardship, and also good Samaritan, excuse me, random acts of kindness. In late April, we did present our February award recipient, which was Mike Kelly of McDonald's. And we have a video that we'd like to share with you as well.
It's Mike Kelly. Second one.
It's hard to pick just one area to nominate Mike under. Mike has been a pillar in our community for many, many years with his own balanced business. If you go under at any given time, especially during the busy lunch rush or when a bus rolls in, you can find Mike doing many different positions throughout the business. He's known in common, seen him work in the deep fire or delivering food for the lower order section. Through all of this, he is always incredibly thankful to his team. I have personally seen him come to the front counter after a busy lunch hour and yell out, "Excellent work, everyone. Thank you" to his team. One area I feel Mike deserves particular character is his giving. He's incredibly generous with his business. I think back to my youth and I cannot remember the day without the McDonald's high tea drink. He has donated to countless events, activities, Eagle Scout projects, mine being one of them, and individuals throughout our community. As a former paramedic in the Dickinson area, I cannot recall a major fire standby without someone coming with donated McDonald's food. Mike is also extremely generous with the Ronald McDonald House charities and cabin fever benefit in the area. My daughter has a congenital heart defect. She's been kind of popping up on the screen or that's her on our various visits to the Ronald McDonald Houses. So we've stayed at multiple Ronald McDonald Houses over the past few years, keeping us close to her and her hospital team. Mike has a picture of his sitting by the Ronald statue in his office, kissing one of the many children he's helped. Again, as I stated before, I look at the nomination criteria and I think I could honestly check every box for Mike Kelly. I feel like he would personally be most proud of his brothers as good Samaritan, providing countless random acts of kindness, and that is what I ultimately nominated under. Thank you for your consideration. Our community is blessed tonight and gay. We are proud of our new friends.
Mike is one of the leaders of this group. Thanks to Mike and his unwavering support and leadership, our Ronald McDonald House was celebrated its 30th birthday this July 18th.
McDonald's Corporation has recognized Kelly like you're recognizing right now in our community.
He walks over the drive-through window and out to the lobby and he says hi to somebody. He swears he's known that person for 35 years.
You've been an ambassador for McDonald's for over 40 years. Anyone who knows you or have come in contact with you have experienced your passion to put people first. And you've established a reputation for McDonald's as being an employer of choice.
Mike's always gone, gone beyond, and taken it to the next level, too. Congratulations. You were welcome.
Mike was the one who spearheaded the addition out of the library and then the bookmobile. Because of Mike, it's still running here in southwest North Dakota.
I consider Mike one of my best friends, so I appreciate him as a friend and we both have been friends together.
Mike and Kay, you two are some of the best people I've ever known in my life. I think you've done a lot for countless young people. And everybody says here that this man is a pillar in our community. You're not lying. He is. And we really do appreciate that. So Mike, if you want to come forward. I'd like to present you with this award. This is the Stark County Spirit of Excellence Award for Mike Kelly in recognition of outstanding excellence in good Samaritan and random acts of kindness. And we really do appreciate all you do for this community and southwest North Dakota.
Thank you.
Why didn't I have this to be the friends? I'm glad to see how you guys. This is really a surprise. I kind of thought something was going on because when we got up this morning, I usually come into the store and later I'd go breakfast and then I'd go to the bank. And then we had to drive downtown and I thought, wow, I don't know. I knew something was going on. That's a credit. And I want to know if you've had good years here, done the greatest things I think we've done since I've been at McDonald's, as long as I'm alive. Something means a lot to me, a lot, seems to mean a lot to the people in North Dakota. It started that years ago. She said 30 years ago. I didn't think I'd be able to do this for years or months ahead. But Catherine's done a good job and I guess the thing, three weeks, since over the years, as Nicole mentioned, that I like people. I know people that are doing food. And when I hired Dale, I told him that people are doing the same thing in my business. We've got a lot of cool people. We've got a lot of managers. They know a lot about this business. We've got a good secretary, David, in our office. Good. Really good for me. And there he is. I appreciate y'all being here and thank you.
Well deserved. Well deserved. Thank you, guys.
You can't say no to Mike Kelly. He doesn't say no to any of the people in town that need anything and we sure appreciate it. Thank you, Mike.
Mike and Kay, it's been great being your friends through everything from bartending to the cabin fever committee, to when I worked with the convention bureau and you were on the board. Love you guys dearly.
The day was about Mike. And, you know, having everyone join together in a room to share such positive, awesome stories about someone else, you really, you cannot put a value on that.
Well, thank you. I'd love to just dive in myself. They brought cake. So before you add the cake, if you'd like something to eat, before you add the cake, we're all open and up handed it.
This Spirit of Excellence Award is an awesome way to acknowledge and show appreciation of your tireless commitment and charitable contributions over the years. Congratulations. Well deserved.
There was a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to share a real quick story about my experience with Mike. In 1967, I went to work at the Esquire Steakhouse downtown. And Mike, of course, was the new owner of the, or of the business at that time, buying it from Bill Bedoin. Anyhow, 85 cents an hour. And every Friday, we would have to go from the kitchen upstairs to his office and he would give everybody their little envelope. You didn't get a paycheck, you got cash with a little pay stub in it. And I was just a juvenile delinquent at the time, right? And he had never forgotten my name through all those years. Anytime I might casually bump into him, wherever, it was always, "Hi, Ken. How you been?" And then one other real quick story. I have a son that lives out in the Seattle area and we were visiting out there and some friends of friends showed up and got to talking and this lady says, "Well, where are you from?" And I said, "Dickinson, North Dakota." She goes, "Oh, my God, I used to live in Dickinson. Do you know Mike Kelly?" I said, "Yeah, I do. Well, I worked for him." And I said, "Well, when was that?" She said, "1967, '68." And I said, "Well, I worked there at the same time." And so all of a sudden, but the point being is that all of those comments made absolutely One of the classiest guys there is. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. That comment that you just shared was one of so many repetitive things that was, that were said throughout that morning at McDonald's. And, you know, we wanted to have it at McDonald's because, well, it was very appropriate because that, of course, that's, that's his, that's his place. But, you know, we knew that he wanted to share the day with his staff and we knew that he would accredit much of his success to his staff. And like I mentioned, you know, at the award presentation, you know, he wasn't given, he wasn't awarded this award because, you know, he's Mike Kelly. You know, he was awarded this award because of the awesome things that he does for not just McDonald's, but for, you know, kids with the Ronald McDonald House, you know, the cabin fever benefit. He's just, he's a great person with amazing customer service that, you know, you mentioned that you rented with people in a different town. Someone mentioned during the presentation that, gosh, I think, I can't remember who it was. It doesn't matter. But they had said that they were at an airport and I forget where it was at, but they had mentioned, "Did you, do you know Mike Kelly?" You know, and that they would run into someone at an airport so far away that would know him too. So it was very well deserved. So I appreciate your comments and we appreciate having Dean at the presentation as well. The next deadline for the awards will be May 15th, so it's coming up very, very quickly. Again, we're doing just four this year. So if you know of someone that is deserving, we love having just a couple hours to highlight them and to show appreciation for all they do. Stark County Sheriff ND is the website where you can go to. I'll be sharing this video later today on Facebook. You can catch it there too, so feel free to share away because we really want to highlight Mike and share with the public what he does for the great county of Stark County. So thank you so much for your time today. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for the excellent job you do with this. I've attended pretty much all of these. I think I missed a couple maybe, but you do an excellent job and I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Sheriff report.
Corey Lee.
Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. Stark County highlights for the month of April 2022. We had 1,144 calls for service in May. That is down from 1,475 last year. And of course, we, we had two extreme weather conditions that, of course, drove those numbers down. You'll see that through the remainder of the report, but obviously, we're not doing a lot of traffic stops and things when it's blizzarding out twice in a month. 156 traffic stops. This is down from 254 last year. 51 of those stops from the city of Dickinson, 105 of those stops from the neighboring communities and small towns in the county. 159 PR stops. This is down from 242 last year. 10 bar checks. That's up from five last year. 10 theft-related calls for service. That's up from seven last year. 49 transports. That included seven prisoner, one assist, five court, three juvenile, zero medical, and five mental health. Had 21 canine usages. Had two truck rig stops. She participated in 29 other calls for service last month. 39, or excuse me, 37 agency assists. That's up from 31 the month before. Responded to 21 accidents. Zero, those were pedestrians, zero fatality, thank goodness. Three hit and run, especially with that weather. Four injury and 14 property. There were 73 total arrests for the month of April. Obviously, again, I'm going to touch on the fact that those were two major winter storms. You know, we've been through a pandemic and a storm of the century, so it's been an interesting time for us. We want to thank the road department and emergency management for all their help. We couldn't have done any of this without them. They were both amazing. And I say road department, I mean both the cities and the county. We also want to publicly thank Glenn Bronco for offering his side-by-side. That was a lifesaver. So thank you, Glenn. We attended the behavioral health summit that, Ken Nelson, Deb Nelson's brought to you in front of you guys last month. It was an amazing summit in Watford City. Myself and three of the staff attended. Again, it was amazing. I also wanted to touch on again the suicide rate in the county this year. Last year, we had approximately 16 suicides over the course of 2021. This year, we're already at nine. And that's the solid ones that we know about, of course. Some of the overdoses and things like that are always questionable, but I do want to get out-of-state travel approved to, from you guys. That would be, come up in a couple of weeks here. That would be Deputy Steve Byrne, the acquisition from Bellfield and his canine. Looking to send them out to Minnesota for some remedial stuff. Essentially, I'm just asking for the fuel. The city of Bellfield canine fund is presumptively going to take care of the hotel. There's no cost for the training itself, so that would be five days.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or any... Okay. I'll just do it all in favor. I won't do a roll call.
It's your choice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right. Since it came up last month here, Deputy Klot reminded me, since we were talking about canine Jerry Lee last month, that he reminded me that he was never introduced to the commission. So I'd like to do that today real quick here. In addition to that, it's also Jerry Lee's fourth birthday today, so if you would wish him a happy birthday. This is Jerry Lee's handler, Elsie.
Jerry Lee.
Hello.
This is Elsie. Elsie's five. Jerry Lee, like Corey said, is, is his fourth birthday. Elsie is my number one assistant when it comes to, to working with Jerry at home and even on days off. She helps me feed him. She helps me put him outside, clean up after him, and the other dogs as well. She's been an intricate part in his development as far as socializing him with people. I'm able to take him into schools now without any worries. I think Elsie is interested in maybe showing you a couple of things that he'll do for her, if you want to, Elsie. She's kind of shy at this point.
Elsie, do you want to show us some things you can do with your dog? We'd love to see him.
Here, I'll hold the leash. If you want to grab, get his ball. Here, come. You can see she has no problem. Elsie, stand up. She has no problem getting down in front of him. She's going to be bashful. Sit. Good. Okay, go ahead, hold the ball out. Yes. If you can play the tug with him, he'll play all day long with her. He's been on the trampoline with her, go play in the snow together. He plays well with the other dogs as well. I've got a little dog that's about the size of his head and there's no aggression issues there at all. Mixes well with the family. This is my wife over here, this is Roseanne. She also helps with him.
What a great addition.
Questions for Dave or Jerry Lee?
We debate the whole Jerry, Jerry Lee name every day, so. Anybody's got any questions?
Thanks for bringing that in.
Pick a dog up.
Your name's Elsie, right? Elsie, thanks for everything you do for that dog. Thank you. County Road, Mr. Heiser.
Did we have, should we? I would like to thank the class for coming. I'm sorry, I should have acknowledged them all, but thank you for coming. Yes, you bet.
Well, good morning, everyone. Just, in a quick update, we're trying to get some roads bladed. Believe it or not, with all the moisture, the roads are actually getting kind of hard to dry again. We have a bid opening here at 10 o'clock on some, some projects. One thing I was, it's kind of exciting for some of our kids over at Jefferson Elementary. The North Dakota LTAP has what they call a sign warrior calendar, so you can actually color a sign and put it up somewhere. And actually, two kids from Jefferson were chosen to be put in the 23 calendar. So next Friday, on the 13th, myself and probably the sheriff, send one of his people over to, over to the school to, you know, give them their award for that. So which, you know, any kids, it's all fourth graders in the whole, you know, the whole state that put in for it. Two girls from Jefferson were actually chosen this year. Which I thought was kind of neat. One other thing Karen brought up at the resolution, we need to sign the resolution for Northern Plains due to construction engineering for them two box culverts that we're going to put in this summer. Actually, we only received two RFPs, one from Northern Plains and one from HDR, which they actually backed out. Apparently, they lost some staffing or something. So we did the interview, Bernie, was it Tuesday? Tuesday, I think it was. So we did the interview here and went through everything. So Stark County will have to sign a resolution to get it sent into the state, so.
Can I get a motion on that so I can sign it, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation to select Northern Plains Engineering for the construction engineering on BRO C P D 0045, 20007. It's B C N 23166, structure numbers 45-146-26.0 and 45-149-19.0.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call vote. Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried.
One other brief item, I'd like to thank my staff for, for this last snowstorm we had. Some of them actually camped out in Richardson shop and it was quite a challenge. And I never realized how many times ambulances have to go out during the night until we have to go ahead of them. So, you know, I want to thank them. And Shawna, she kept everybody kind of abreast where we were at, what we were doing, so.
I'd like to add on to that because, like I said, when we had that little breakfast over at, at the shop, I did get multiple calls saying, "What a good job the county did getting out there and, and doing the work they were doing." And that reflects back on to me, you know. No, it was amazing. That's good.
And it was tough because we actually send somebody out to rescue somebody and actually the guy run the loader in the ditch and we got to be rescued ourselves. So that's, some people don't really realize when it's no travel advised, how it puts everybody else at risk because, but anyway, we had a good outcome. MDU had a power outage, so they managed to rescue us on their way through, so. Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Question for you, Al. So now, in heading your, where this truck got washed off that low water crossing?
Yes.
Is heading your county any liability on that?
Well, usually, they're, they're, they're signed properly. We have ours all signed, you know, if, "Do not cross if water's over the road." I think they were probably, it's really unfortunate and sad that it happened, but they're probably just, we're unfamiliar.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's what it is. Our, our crossings are all signed, "If there's any water, then all, do not attempt to cross them."
Okay, well, that's good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Highland Engineering, Mr. Neuss.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Quick report today. Bridge replacement project southeast of Richardson on 80th Avenue Southwest. We got the final plan submitted, environmental document approved, and we're on the June 10th bid letting through the DOT. It's the bridge replacement northeast of Richardson. We do not have any funding yet for that, but we are going ahead on the environmental clearance process and the PSNE plans and so we're working on those two items right now. So we hopefully get some funding through, some federal funding this summer through the bipartisan infrastructure bill, so. Does anybody have any questions on either project?
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Northern Plains, Jeremy Wood.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Few brief updates, starting with construction projects that carryover project at Bellfield, a little bit of seeding left to do and erosion control. They'll do that as time permits, which might be fairly soon if, if conditions allow. The 38th Street Bridge that Wilson Construction's going to be building, we're trying to get a pre-job set up in the next couple of weeks. He's intending on starting sometime in June, so that one should start, start pretty soon. The 83rd and 86th Avenue Bridge Project south of Richardson, the county has just awarded the construction engineering to us. So what you see on the screen is, is kind of old news there, but it sounds like Martin Construction is starting potentially in October as a, as a starting date for that project. So a little bit of time before you see much action on that. Some of the design projects we've been working on, we have a bid opening set up in about 10 minutes for some paving projects, which is 116th Avenue west of, of Dickinson, 36th Street east of town, it's about 1,000 feet. And then the copper leaf subdivision will be bid here at 10 o'clock. Another project we're looking at a June bid opening for is 32nd and 107th Avenue, the grading portion of that project. We got just a few remaining easements to acquire and, but we're looking for a June bid opening for that project. Then a couple DOT projects we're working 36th Street east of town is about 1,000 feet. And then the copper leaf subdivision will be bid here at 10 o'clock. Another project we're looking at a June bid opening for is 32nd and 107th Avenue, the grading portion of that project. We got just a few remaining easements to acquire and, but we're looking for a June bid opening for that project. Then a couple DOT projects we're working on, 131st Avenue west of Bellfield. One is northwest and one is southwest of Bellfield. We have the environmental documents submitted to the DOT and we're looking at a fall bid opening, probably November bid opening with construction in 2023. And lastly, 127th Avenue, we're still kind of waiting on the state archaeologist. Sounds like there's going to be some additional testing. It may not be quite as extensive as we first thought, but he's still determining how much testing he wants. And then we'll test and kind of see what happens after that. But it sounds like we'll get an answer fairly soon from the archaeologists on how much testing there is. So other than that, that's all I have on my list. We got that bid opening very soon here, so I'll be around for that and answer any more questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Jeremy. Commissioner Messer, would we have time? We have five minutes to talk about either the courthouse mechanical or the courthouse front entrance?
Not in front.
No, okay.
I can do mine.
Okay. We will do the appointment of primary election inspectors?
I provided to the commission, it's kind of towards the back of your packets, a list of election inspectors for the 2022 primary. We do have some subs and it's been tricky getting people to want to work elections. But I'm just looking from the commission, an approval of the list of election inspectors provided for the 2022 primary. It's the second to the last page.
And you comfortable that this number meets what you need to get the job done?
Yes, we went by the previous election.
So this is just inspectors, these aren't all the volunteers and stuff also? These are just?
Well, there's not really volunteers. And they're all, they're all paid and they're either clerks, inspectors, or judges.
Okay.
The inspectors are the ones that are, if you look down below, they're the ones that are basically attached to a machine and they're responsible for that machine.
Okay. And we can add on to this if need be, correct?
We are also going to have two subs.
Okay.
And so actually, Joetta has agreed to be one of the subs. She's going to train on two different subpositions in case we need her. And then I had one other person too that agreed to be a sub.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I'll move that the list of the provided inspectors be approved for the 2022 primary election.
Negative second.
No second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
That, just going back to engineer reports, I know it's not on the agenda, but does K L J have a report to make? I know we have some stuff in our.
Andrew Krebs from K L J. Currently, we just have one wetland mitigation monitoring project that we, is on hold till probably June-ish. We go out there. The only other thing we did was a plat review that Steve asked us to do. Otherwise, we don't have any other current projects with the county.
Okay.
Thank you. I just saw you sitting there and I was thinking.
Yeah, I mean, I'm still interested in coming to the meetings or somebody is from K L J if I'm at another meeting. But yeah, we're just like, know what's going on.
Thank you. Okay, we will wait the three minutes. Do you have to wait to start opening them too? Right at 10?
10, he's going to bring it this year.
Amanda, do we have to wait till 10 to start opening them?
How many do you have, Karen?
Thank you.
Shouldn't take more than a minute. Thank you. Thanks, Jeremy.
Amanda, did you want to come over here and look at these as I open?
Here, you can just, I can.
I got it here. It's just three. All I gotta do is look at that back page. Good for my claws, I'm just going to take it off.
Karen, hold on.
Yeah, I'm just going to take it off. I'm really fine. No, you're, you're, got a good excuse.
That a minute takes a long time when you're looking at it. Okay, it's 10 o'clock. We will do the bid opening. It's the first one. So we'll do the opening of Northern Improvement Company? Leaf is $364,604. The bid for 36th Street is $121,276. And the bid for 116th Avenue is $679,726.20. Okay, this is Mayo Construction Company for a copper leaf. $300,007 for 36th Street. It is $147,378. For 116th Avenue, $779,459. Anybody need to repeat it?
Just for your information, the reason we bid these separately is because we kind of have a unique situation going on here this summer. We got a paving plant at New England. We got one east of Dickinson and then Northern's got a plant west of Dickinson. So we're going to sit down and we're going to put these numbers together and see where we end up at. And then before the meeting is over, we'll come back for a recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Break. We will be back at?
11:00.
10:20. Oh, wait, that's only, 10:25. There we go. Turn your speaker on.
Just a quick comment in regards to, Mr. Heiser mentioned the road department doing outstanding job during their recent storm activity. And I think we need a shout out to Mike for taking care of the courthouse snow removal business. And I think you also did social service, the office complex too. And so just like I said, thanks, thanks, Mike, for making sure all that gets done.
Thank you, Mike.
You gotta add that to the sheriff's department too, because like Corey was saying, the guys are out there, they're getting stranded. And, you know, their families are sitting at home, you know, wondering and worrying. And they're out there taking care of people in need, pajama bottoms and clogs or whatever they're wearing.
In that first storm emergency management, the two employees, Nikita and Shawna, they stayed there, slept overnight. They stayed there for three days, so.
We're very blessed.
Yep.
Emergency people hear that. Be look out for the people of our county.
Okay, we are going to go on to planning and zoning. Mr. Josephson.
Madam Chair Commissioner, Steve Josephson, county planner. The planning, our county planning and zoning commission held its meeting on April 21st, 2022. And they made recommendations for two, you know, at two public hearings. One of them was for a conditional use permit for banquet hall reception hall, reception facility for Brandy and Michael Johnson located at 11771 31st Street Southwest. And both staff and, staff and the planning commission recommended approval subject to a number, a number of conditions that the Johnsons would have to meet before they can open. You know, they can open and they pertain to things like, you know, getting their certificate of occupancy, meeting parking standards, a number, a number of things that are, that are related to the development phase of it, limitation of hours. Many of these conditions were ones that, that they actually said, this is what our operation is and the conditions are based upon those. So both staff and the, and planning and zoning, both staff and the planning and zoning commission recommended approval subject to the conditions and findings in the staff report. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
So you're saying the applicant agrees with all the conditions?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any more questions?
I myself really don't, I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea and it's a great. My only concern is the traffic on the dirt roads. I mean, are they going to head from South Heart north and then, and then, I mean, and you can't dictate how people drive out there. You know, but from South Heart Road on the farm to market road and then come east? Are they going to come up on 116th Street or 114th? I mean, there must be, if you're making arrangements with the venue, you're the venue and you're hosting, are you?
Express your concern, Ms. Johnson. Do you want to come on up, please? Do you want to come on up, please?
I mean, it's, you can do however you want. I'm just worried about, you know, the roads and traffic and, you know, it reflects back onto our road department and stuff. And so that's my only concern.
In, excuse me, in regards to your comment, is that part of the discussion in the P and Z? Application permitting period?
No, that's, that's, that's not, you know. What we have is more site, is more site specific because planning and zoning can make recommendations based upon the site. You know, anything off the site like that, you know, you can't really condition, people have to come down this road.
No, you can't, but I agree with you about that.
In order to get there. But I think that that's something to advise the applicants if they say do, do an ad or do something, say, we recommend this route.
When you're visiting with your people, I mean, it's, it doesn't really make me any difference, but I just am concerned because if they come up on 116th Street, that's not a 116th Avenue. What is a street avenue? It's not a, it's a secondary road and. Yes, and so then all of a sudden, people are going to be coming back, that why is this road so rough? And then, you know, farm to market road, I mean, that's good. You only got what, two miles to come to the east from there?
You want to come forward, Brandy?
Yeah, your name, just, your name and address, please.
My name and address? Brandy Johnson, 11771 31st Street, Southwest Dickinson.
And that's, that's, I don't know if anybody, but that's the only concern I have is, and the people's safety too, if it's a rough road or if they're, you know, going.
The easiest, well, you know, the easiest route for people who aren't familiar with the area, just go straight north, South Heart.
It is, yes. But people from Dickinson are going to say, well, we just got on 116th Street because that's halfway from going all the way to South Heart.
I'm open to whatever you'd suggest.
I mean, it's your, it's your business, you can do it all you want, you know.
Well, not really.
They can come from erratic for all I know.
Yes, they can come from erratic or whatever. That's my own concern is reflection back onto our road department.
Maybe on your venue, you could just put down the address. That's the safest address of north of South Heart and maybe more people will take that.
Directions to come out there, that might be an idea on your.
Okay. Thank you.
No, you have to stand there till Steve's just done.
Take a load off.
I make a motion to Star County Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of CUP 01-22 for Brandy and Michael Johnson request, subject to the conditions listed above for banquet hall and or reception hall, conditional use permit as meets the goals, objections, implications of strategies for the Star County Comprehensive Plan and all the requirements of Star County Planning and Zoning ordinance and also in the interest of public safety, health, and welfare.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you. The second, the second item that the Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation was, was for RZ 0422, and that's Todd and Tanis Marshner. They're requesting a rezoning from agriculture to rural residential and their parcel is, I'll just tell you, it's 116th and it's part of a 70 acre parcel that's just north of Martin Construction. And they just want to take off approximately, it's 6.91 acres and put a house on it. They own the entire piece, but for financing, they want a smaller, you know, they need to get a smaller piece for that. Both the, both staff and Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. We received no comments either prior to the meeting or at the public hearing. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Josephson?
You said this is just north of Martin on the same side of the road?
Right, and it's actually, there's a 70 acre piece north of Martin Construction. And if you go to the northern portion of that property, then this is part of that. And if you go to the northern portion of that property, then this is part of that.
Okay. Kind of on the downslope of the hill, then?
It's right behind, it's right behind you on the monitor, if you go in.
I can't see a hill, though. The, there's, whatever, I know where it's at, that's fine.
Yeah, they're right in there.
Right, okay.
Just a quick question, Steve. In your executive summary, you state that the applicant intends to sell his property to family members with the intent of developing it with a single-family resident. That's not a restriction?
No, that's just
Sold again, it's open free market.
Yeah, that's not a restriction, that's, you know, we put that in there so the commissioners know why this is up. No, the only restrictions that would apply are those in the zoning, the zoning code and any other, you know, any other county regulations, permitting and so on, building code and so on.
Any other questions? If not, I'd look for a motion.
I move the Star County Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of RZ zero-dash-zero-four-dash-twenty-two, Todd and Tanis Marshner rezoning petition for, from A to RR has meeting the goals, objectives, and implementations of strategies of the Star County Comprehensive Plan, all the requirements of the Star County zoning ordinance, and also best interest of the public health, safety, and welfare.
Second.
Got a motion in second. Roll call vote. Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Xander.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you, we'll notify the applicants of the commission's action.
Okay, and Steve, I also had on yours too, do we, I know Neil had talked to you, or Commissioner Messer talked to you a little bit too, about the properties south of town.
Yeah, in the extraterritorial zone.
Yes.
Yeah, do you have an address, an address for that? You know, I don't recall having spoken to Ms. Erlacher, but I guess apparently what, they contacted the city about this, and the city said it was what, outside their jurisdiction? They do have zoning jurisdiction, the extraterritorial zone, so I'm not sure who they talked to over there. But if I can get some details, you know, I'll get with the Building and Code Enforcement Department and make them aware of this. I don't know if they've been speaking with her at all, but I can follow up and let you know.
Because she said, she had made comment that she had called the county, and the county told her to call the city. So then she called the city, and then the city told her it's the counties, and it's just getting worse and worse.
I hate when that happens.
Yeah.
They have it back and forth, and
Especially since you work for both entities, they could just come and call you and
I mean, it's
I think sometimes what happens is, as soon as someone gets an address, and they just say, oh, that's not in the city. And I don't think they mean anything, like they're avoiding it, you know, but the first contact, you know, they usually don't get past, sometimes it's, I'm only speculating right now. But yes, give me all the details about it, and
I have pictures and everything.
Pictures, address, legal description, and I'll get with, I'll get with city staff about that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Onto the courthouse mechanical.
Madam Chairman, I'll bring Mike forth, and he can kind of go through what we've tried to accomplish.
Yeah, so we put out for advertisement for engineer for the courthouse mechanical replacement or repair. And we had the interviews, and I did not get on the slideshow, but Prairie Engineering, who Neil, Dean, and then Ms. Richards was invited to the interviews, but that's who we decided to go with, was recommend Prairie Engineering.
Where are they from?
Bismarck.
Okay.
Yeah, and they've done all the work in this courthouse in the past.
Okay.
There's, I haven't found They've done a tremendous amount of work for the public school system. Yeah. They're well-versed, we just, the issue, as most people know, is that we have a eighty-year-old mechanical system that needs to be fixed. And so we gotta figure out the best way to do it. Yeah. And so this is, the first process is to engage them. Yeah.
And we're gonna need to go from there, if, how far we wanna go with.
In that mechanical, that's including that boiler?
Both boiler, well, yes, it will include the boilers, the lines, registers in the
Potentially both.
It's potentially all of it, we really, this is just to choose that's who we're gonna go with.
Okay.
And then we need to talk about numbers and plans, so.
So do we have any numbers right now, or anything, or just nothing, nothing like that, just the
We did a, kind of a, not a preliminary budget with them the last, this spring, this fall, and we brought that up to the commission, and there was three phases we could do, and they gave us some just general numbers of what we were looking at, so.
Okay.
Now it's time to get into the details.
Okay.
So what, if you're going to be accepting Prairie Engineering as our engineering firm, can you also accept that the fees would be paid out of our capital improvements fund? Because that's where it would be to
Well, I believe so, I think another option would be ARPA funds of the second half that comes in would be a perfectly qualified opportunity, but I think that's for up for the board. You know, they did the initial survey, Prairie did the initial survey last fall, kinda gave us a three-legged, you know, synopsis saying, here's some budgetary numbers, if you just Band-Aid it, it's X, if you come in and keep the boilers and do a system, it's X. And then if you go in and do what probably should be done, it's, you know, it's another number. And so we came in front of the commission, I believe in December, for authorization to do the RFP. That was authorized, this is the result of that RFP.
Do we have the numbers of the Band-Aid compared to this, or that, I mean?
Well, I mean, I, we have a, I'll let Mike answer the question, but
Yeah, we have them, they're generic, you know.
Yeah.
It's three-fifty, three-hundred thousand, about seven-hundred thousand, and then about one-point-five million.
And I think I have that sheet, I can resend it out, because I think the last time it was sent out was probably in December.
Yeah.
So we are approving the engineer company, but we don't know what they're going to do, if they're gonna totally
Well, things have changed, you know, costs have gone up, timetables on getting things, you know, so that's kind of all fluctuating from December to now.
Yeah. I'm just saying like
I think I can answer your questions, because I know where you're going with this. So their fee is based on nine percent of the cost of the project. The project can take any one of those three options. And if they come in with the one that we don't like, they still get nine percent of whatever that estimated cost is. If we run this through, and we don't like the one-point-X-million-dollar project, and we wanna go with the middle option, that's still, we can still do it, their fee would be based at nine percent of that. But it's kind of give and take, because anybody who's remodeled a home know, you only get to the information once you start digging into it. And it's unfortunate, older buildings, the way they, you know, did these mechanicals, because everything's buried in concrete and
Very impermanent.
Very, yeah, and anybody who went downstairs in the last, this last winter know that we kept it quite warm and quite humid downstairs, so.
So we probably won't see our first invoice for this until next
At earliest, yeah, so the
Okay, so I don't need to worry about that.
We want to design this, they have to design it, they have to do more survey, and then they would go out for some preliminary numbers and bring those back to us. There's no way this is a twenty-twenty-two project, it's a twenty-twenty-three
And to get, and to get the materials, it's gonna be
Yeah, I mean, it's just
Okay.
So many challenges.
And you can't start it until those boilers are shut down. Like, right now, they're still running for, you know, so we can probably shut them down a little earlier in the spring, maybe.
So are we just looking on an approval to
Except, yeah.
Accept Prairie Engineering.
Sign the contract with Prairie Engineering, so I will make that motion unless there's other questions.
Okay, motion, who's second that?
Karen.
Motion made by Commissioner Messer, second by Commissioner Xander. Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Then on to the courthouse front entrance.
So I started working on this about a year and a half ago, then things just got super busy, and it wasn't a critical thing at the moment. We did have an engineer look at it at that time and give me some notes on it. And as I've done the bidding and talked to construction workers, they, they don't really want, it's all handwork. And they're really requesting that I get an architectural scope of work, not necessarily have them do the bidding and anything like that, but just so that there's slopes and ADA requirements, and just a nice scope of work for the bidding. You can see here with the stone steps, they are starting to tilt back. Any water that is on that stoop comes forward and sits, freezes. And that had been an issue, this spring I have found where that stone comes from, and it's from St. Cloud, Minnesota. And the quarry is still there, and we can still get that stone. Nobody, I have talked to a few, they will remove the steps, but they are not comfortable with putting them, setting them back. I contacted, it's a GT architect downtown, and good thing I did, because they know that company, and they are actually working with that company in town this summer. So I want to, would like, I'm kinda asking for the eleven thousand that they're asking for, to give me a complete scope of work with drawings and all that, in order to get proper even bids. And that, everything we want done, and this fixed is in that, so there isn't all the, you know, different ideas of what the contractors
The steps that are gonna be taken out, they will, they don't wanna put those back in?
Those will go back in.
Okay.
They just need to be reset.
Okay.
And sloped, and properly installed. Now you see this picture here, the slab below the steps has settled, and we've got about a three-inch gap there. So that slab needs to be brought up, repoured and brought up for our tread depth. And then the top slab is a floating concrete slab with a rubber membrane underneath it. That'll all have to be hand jackhammered and hauled out, but you can't put any equipment, that slab is actually on top of a room. So you can't bring any equipment up there, it's not built to hold that weight, so that's all gonna be wheelbarrow and crowbars.
Are there any grants available, since this is a, the courthouse, I mean, it's
I have not heard much.
I mean, this is a historical building, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, at one time, I know they did that for, I mean, we can check into that.
This is, Mike, is this not more of a maintenance?
Yeah, it's a more just a
You know, when you think about it, those steps have been in there since nineteen thirty-five or nineteen thirty-six, and
Yeah.
That whole area, and so when you
I know
About seventy years, you've exceeded the life expectancy of that concrete.
And I know that slab on top had been replaced, and I had talked to Dean about it, do you remember what, about what, seventies?
I'm not, I can't remember well, if anyone did.
But, so there's rubber membrane underneath there, is that age as well, so historical value, I don't know if it would be like a historical upkeep, it's more just a replacement of that. And we're not gonna be changing out the steps or making any improvements to it, just making it new.
Well, I would, I would think also that the engineers would have some
Yeah, we can
Knowledge on that, whether or not it's something we can pursue on the grant, if it is, we certainly can. I think what we're asking for today is for authorization to, for the eleven thousand to
Get the scope of work.
Architect this, and, you know, because we've talked about things as, you know, as broad scoped as what happens upon removal of the step if you break one of those granite slabs. So how are we gonna do that, how are we gonna handle that and those, so that's all the things that we kind of wanna address here.
Yeah, and that scope of work would really help with.
And those granite slabs, you said are still available too, though?
Yes, I did contact the company, they, I sent them pictures, and yes, they said that stone is still being quarried today, so.
Okay, then I'd be looking for a motion for the eleven thousand dollars for Prairie.
I just, one real quick question, I guess, so this eleven is actually over and above what his, Mike's
Oh, yes.
Maintenance budget would be, so I would want us to discuss where we're gonna take it. But I, again, I think this is a, an ARPA-qualified project, depending on the consensus of the other commissioners. But I would move that we at least initially authorize the engagement of the architect, GT architect, for the eleven thousand dollar proposal that they supplied us.
I know we have that ARPA, there's some of that funding still kind of hanging out there for the small cities. You know, I guess I would think we should take it out of capital, capital improvement, just so we don't run short on that ARPA.
I don't care, it's something we need to do, so.
The only other thing would be is if there was a grant or something available that might push us into that next year. But I don't, yeah, I don't think there is, but I mean, if something is, like, oh, yeah, then it might push us, but just to let you guys know.
Okay.
So is the motion include the funding source being capital improvement, is that part of your motion?
For the eleven thousand?
Sure, yes. And then I'll second that.
And I'll come back with the construction bids.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the eleven thousand coming out of capital improvement. Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Okay, Star County part-time positions.
I wasn't really sure what the commission wanted to talk about with this, it was added to the agenda. But I did add, from Joetta, just in your packets, the chapter about what is a regular part-time versus part-time employee, and the differences in benefits and hours. I'm just not really sure what we are, and also temporary, it has them all listed there, towards the back of your packets.
Right here.
After the engineering.
I think on some of the employee, I think we were looking at a few of the department heads that do not have, or departments, that do not have anybody underneath them that they're, they are in training. And where we don't wanna get into that. Again, like we did before, like with the auditor or anybody else in any other department, if they decide to up and quit, where would it leave us? And if we would wanna open any positions part-time, if there was available for those departments for training? I know I talked about it with few of the other commissioners also, I mean, we have a few departments that I know that Ms. Ingles said you're opening up right now a position, just in case for witness protection, right?
Yeah, that one's, I've opened it up, and just gonna see what kind of interest is out there, and having some conversations with our current one, correct?
Okay.
Yeah.
So is this for informational purpose?
Yes.
Discussion primarily?
Yes. You know, and I also look at the Veterans Department, and I also look at the Tax Department, I mean, do we have people that are training underneath them? So if something would happen, that we have somebody that would have some knowledge to step up? And do we wanna add any of these positions on? I mean, yes, it would have to be, go on to next year's budget. I just think we're leaving ourselves a little bit open by not having anybody training under these departments.
Chair Arthon, maybe we let everybody look it over, and then for next year's budgets, we see where we're at, dollar amount-wise for each department, and then whoever the portfolio holder, if they think that
we can bring it forward at the budget time, if we think we want to add some of these full or part-time positions to cover. If you're open to that.
Yes, I am.
But at least then everybody can see kind of what the differences are between a regular full-time, a regular part-time, a part-time, a temporary. And they can see that. I know that we only have two regular part-time employees at the county. And their vacation and sick are prorated by the hours they work. Our temporary employees obviously do not receive benefits. And neither do part-time employees that are just labeled part-time, but our regular part-time do qualify for benefits. And then we prorate their sick and vacation on the amount of hours they work. If that helps a little bit.
So if someone's hired regular part-time, those hours can vary, but is, but they need to exceed 20 or more hours per week to qualify and be maintained as a regular part-time employee, correct?
Correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And they are still eligible for, with 20 or more hours, they're still eligible for the full benefit package?
For the benefits, yes.
Prorated?
Prorated.
No, the benefits they get, they get, you know, they're eligible for insurance and, and retirement and everything. The part that's prorated is just their sick days and vacation days.
Retirement though is calculated based on wages?
Correct.
Yeah, so that, that, that kind of qualifies under the prorated part. So the, the discussion and consensus would be, are you going to offer full-time health insurance to a part-time, regular part-time employee, correct?
Yes, that is a question.
Yep, so if I, if I work for the county and work 22 hours a week, I get the same health benefit as the individual who's putting in 40.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
If you're considered regular part-time.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, I, I think this is something that just to be bring up and look at it and see what we agree with and what we don't. And see if we can add any to those departments.
We have about five minutes.
It's not necessary then to take any action?
No.
Or just discussion?
Yep.
Any input that we individually may have, we should just get that to Karen or Joetta or?
Yeah. Or talk, or talk to your portfolio holders, you know?
And Ken, I, I think when, when we sit down, even when we go through the budgets, you know, like for example, if we're choosing veterans, that's your portfolio. When me, you and Jessica sit down, maybe we can look at if that's something we can do in the budget this year. And then it's going to come before the full commission, everybody can see and make some choices.
Thank you.
Just yours, for example.
Well, we got.
Al's not back with his recommendation.
Nope.
Because we're done.
No, we got the policy discussion, but that might take more than five minutes.
That's, yeah, that would. Well, we just have one more item, but that's going to take longer than five minutes, I believe. So we are probably going to just hold off here for five minutes until we open up the 11:00 AM abatements. So we'll take a five-minute break.
Chris Stafford, are you on the line for homestay? Chris Stafford?
It's not on mute or anything, is it?
Is anybody on the line for the homestay? Abatements?
Ms. Wandler?
Chairman, members of the board, we're here for a whole bunch of abatements, but really it's only three, just a bunch of different years. I'm going to let the presenters present first. So if Chris isn't on the line, we can go ahead and let Mr. Tibbles start. He will start with the Jefferson and Lincoln apartments. And then Joe will comment after that. Then we'll go to Chris Stafford if he has something. And then if Joe wants to comment, and then I'll just give my recommendation at the end if that works for you guys.
Okay, sure.
Okay.
Mr. Tibble, did you want to, okay, you're coming in. Okay.
I just, I just sent Mr. Stafford a quick email.
Okay.
Just let him, let him know if he's having trouble at all there. All right, well, first off, thank you to Ms. Wandler and Commissioners. Good, good morning, good afternoon. Appreciate, appreciate the time here today. I'm David Tibbles. I'm from the Fredrickson and Byron Law Firm in Fargo. And I'm going to try to get everything organized there. Appreciate, appreciate your time here today. About this time last year, this body had actually approved a reduction in value for the 2018 tax year for, for the properties that I'm representing, the Jefferson and Lincoln apartment complexes. That was for the, the February 1, 2018 valuation date. Make no mistake, it wasn't everything that the taxpayers had asked for. But I think, you know, just, just kind of knowing how that, how that process played out, I really do think that it, it represented sort of a balancing of what sort of that, that, that property-specific perspective that the taxpayers had presented and, and, and prepared. Along with the kind of more general sort of citywide approach that, that the city assessing department had, had prepared as well. Like I said, it wasn't everything that the taxpayer had requested, but, but it was acceptable and the taxpayer was satisfied and, and moved on. Chose not to, to appeal that, that decision as it, as it could have and frankly, as it, as it has in the past. Today, frankly, I'm, I'm here asking you to engage in the same, the same exercise. And to kind of get us caught up to, to the current day. So you have, for each of Jefferson and Lincoln, you have abatements in front of you for the February 1, 2019, 2020 and 2021 valuations. Like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm really up here today, just respectfully asking that we, we engage in that same sort of exercise for, for those years as well. To get us caught up, caught up to date. I think you can do that. I think you should do that. And, and as I'll go into in, in a little bit more detail here shortly, really at the end of the day, the discussions that we're going to have for these, these particular tax years, it's really not much different than the discussion that was had last year for that 2018 valuation. I have really just a couple of, I think relatively, you know, briefer, briefer remarks than you've heard from me before in the past that I like to get into just to sort of, sort of set the stage as to why, why it is that we're here. And then also what I think you can do with the information that's in front of you. But I do want to reiterate that, that again, I'm, I'm here, I'm happy to answer any sort of questions that you might have with regard to the properties with regard to the applications, anything, anything sort of on, on that front. So please stop me if you have, if you have any questions. Also, if there's any additional information that you think would be, would be useful in, in, in making a decision, I'm certainly happy to get that for you. You know, want, frankly, at the end of the day, I think what we, what we really want is a, a data-supported decision that takes into, takes into account everything that you have available to you today. So with that in mind, just, just kind of a couple, a couple of brief areas of, of comment here. First off, I, I do want to just sort of level set and, and kind of remind sort of what we're, what we're dealing with, what we're trying to do. And then also give an overview of, of, you know, kind of the, the few different perspectives that, that you can use in this sort of, this sort of analysis. Recall that really the most important thing that we're trying to decide when it comes to property tax assessment is true and full value. That's, that's the term that the statute uses. That's the value of a property that, that really, through, through a couple of discounts that statute provides really drives the, the value against which a property is assessed tax. True and full value, like I said, that's the statutory term. We know from the state Supreme Court that really that means fair market value. So what's the price that a willing buyer is going to pay a willing seller in an arms-length transaction? And, you know, ultimately, the decision that you're making today is setting that value, setting that value in dollars. That's, that's what we're getting to. This isn't, this isn't an equalization hearing like, like happens at, at this time of year. It's, it's really an abatement. It's what's the value of, of, of this, these two properties and actually the, the home stay is, as well. Now, fair market value, obviously if, if a property sells today, we have a pretty good idea of what fair market value might be today. You know, unless it were, you know, foreclosure sale or a, you know, parent selling to a child. We've, we've got pretty good certainty that any sort of unrelated party transaction that gets recorded in the property records gives us a pretty good idea of what market value is. As you can imagine, with commercial properties, in particular in our, in our state, those sorts of transactions don't happen every day. And for the properties that we're dealing with here, they weren't, they, there haven't been any sales in, in kind of recent, relevantly recent memory to rely upon. So what do you do in that situation? While the state Supreme Court, again, recognizes that the three generally accepted real estate appraisal practices are all valid ways to estimate, estimate what that market value might be. Those three approaches, very briefly, comparative sales, the cost approach and the income capitalization approach. Comparable sales is as it sounds. Do we have recent sales of similar properties that we can use to get a sense of what the value of this property, the property in question might be? Cost approach, what's it going to cost to build a substantially similar property, to reconstruct it as of, as of that date? And income capitalization, we'll talk a lot about that here shortly. But really it's, what's, what's the income stream that a property represents? What can we, can we, can we sort of quantify what that, what that return on investment might be? Now, those three approaches are all valid. No one is necessarily inherently better or more accurate. They have different, I think, different roles depending on the context. Some might have different utilities, some might have different relevance. And so, you know, just again, briefly, I think in terms of, in terms of utility, when we think about the comparative sales approach, particularly here in North Dakota, these, you know, these sorts of commercial properties aren't selling every day. And so it's not uncommon to not have a useful, quality enough data set to be able to, to run a, a reliable sales comparison approach. And actually, that's something that, that the taxpayer here and, and the city, city assessing department agree. There just really isn't enough there to run a reliable approach. In terms of relevance, you know, for, for a residential property, I guess unless you're, you know, you're thinking about, you know, renting it out as an Airbnb, the income approach doesn't really, doesn't really make a whole lot of sense, right? On the flip side, I think for a commercial, for a commercial property, the cost approach might actually serve more as a check rather than sort of a primary, primary analysis of value. But really, all of that is meant to say that there's certainly some science in this, but there is also some art as well. And I think, you know, to the extent that any, any of you have any sort of experience with real estate investing or have seen appraisals, you know that it's not uncommon for those three approaches to present slightly different or drastically different values for a given, for given property. Sometimes those values are very tightly bunched, sometimes they're a little bit broader. And a, an appraiser will oftentimes wait those three different approaches based on a little bit of their gut, but also a recognition of, all right, the data that we've got, what's, what's good? Do we have good sales? Maybe I'm going to wait that at 60% and wait the other two at 20% each, that sort of thing. That's the sort of, sort of analysis, analysis that goes into sort of that multi, multi-approach view of real estate assessment, trying to get to, trying to get to market value. I say all of that because I think you can do that here today. Frankly, I think that's what you did last year as well. And I, you know, I, I think what I want to do next is really just sort of give you a sense of what are those data points that you can, that you can weigh? Like I said, we have three different approaches, approaches to value. You essentially have two of them in the information that's, that's presented to you between the taxpayers and, and the city assessing department. The sales comparison approach, like I said, you really don't have any sort of analysis done on that because there just isn't, there just isn't, you know, recent nearby quality sales data to support any sort of, any sort of decent, decent analysis on that front. And so the city hasn't prepared that, taxpayer hasn't prepared that either. The other two approaches, the cost approach and the income approach, you do have. The city assessing department and the information that they provided does essentially have a cost-like approach in there as well. You know, based on what's it, what's it going to cost to build, you know, properties of, you know, these particular specifications? I'm not going to contest that. I don't, you know, I'm not an architect. I'm not, not a construction manager. I don't have access to the, you know, sort of mass appraisal tools that the assessing department has. I think it's, you know, of, I don't think it's of primary importance with regard to, to a commercial property, but it's a useful, useful data point. So you have that. That's one, kind of one data point that you have before you. The income approach, the, the city has prepared an income approach and I'm, I'm, I'm glad they did that. I can tell you frankly, that not every city assessing department does that sort of thing. And I'm really not going to contest much, you know, for, for the result that the, that the city income approach does. What I will say however, is that it largely represents an analysis based on more citywide survey information. So that's where that sort of data comes from. You know, I'm sure it's, it's quality data. I know it's, I know it's not complete, partially frankly, because I know that my taxpayers, my clients haven't provided information as part of that survey. I know they're not alone in that sort of thing. You know, and, and also frankly, I guess, you know, my, my clients can't necessarily know the quality of the data that gets provided by other taxpayers to, to the city there. But that's generally the sort of information driving that income approach. It has its biases, you know, just as, just as a cost approach does, just as any, any, you know, any of the three approaches, approaches does. So that's point two that you have sort of, you know, as a, as a data point for, for consideration. Point three is the income approach that the taxpayer has prepared. And what I will tell you is you have in your materials, the, actually the actual, you know, income approach calculation that's been prepared for each year, for each of these properties. And I'm certainly, certainly happy to go through and, and, and describe any of the, any of the numbers, any questions you might have on those. But what I will say is to the extent possible, what we use in those calculations is property-specific numbers. Real world coming straight from the financial statements, from the rentals, to the extent that we can. There are two, there are two numbers that are not coming straight from those pieces of information. Number one is the assumed number that we use for reserves per, per unit in the property. We use a standard $250 just as a, just as a kind of standard, standard practice number. That's something that we've seen in other income approach calculations. You know, to the extent that you think that's, that's maybe not the, not the best number to use. I actually have it on my spreadsheet here. I can plug, I can plug that in. I'm certainly open to, open to doing that. The other number that isn't coming straight from financial statements is the capitalization rate. And of course, we can, we can get into that. I think you folks, we've, we've had this sort of conversation before. There's a bit of an art form when it comes to deciding what's, what's an appropriate capitalization rate. We have a few different data points, you know, from market-based information and then actually from historical sales of these two properties that, that, that support that 9.75% number. I realize that that, you know, folks, folks will disagree and I think the, the city assessing department has a different, different number that they would use on that sort of thing. But, but that too, I think to the extent that you have information or, or strong feelings, we can, we can plug that in there and, and adjust the calculation accordingly. That's the best information that, that we have, that we have there. So those are those three, those three approaches there. Like I said, I think the property-specific analysis that the taxpayer's income approach calculation is more relevant than, than the other one, the other two data points that you have before you, the cost approach and the, the income approach sort of results that the, that the city has prepared. I think, you know, you know, and, and I know that if, if we were in the market for these properties and we were trying to get a sense of what, what is the fair market value? What's the number that, you know, I think that, that I should be able to buy these properties for? I'm, I'm gonna run an income-based approach analysis using the actual performance of the property. That's going to be the best idea, that's going to give us the best idea of, you know, what's the, you know, how is this, how is this property going to perform based on how it performed in the past? But at the same time, I certainly, certainly realize that we might also run an income-based approach, you know, using, using the, using the methodology that the city assessing department uses. Both of those approaches have biases. I think they get washed out in the end. But, but really at the end of the day, kind of the, the responsibility here is to put on that hat of the investor and get a sense of, all right, what is, what is that value that I? what is, what is that value that I think, what is that fair market value that I, that I think that is? Like I said, this isn't an equalization hearing. It's a determination of what's, what's the fair market value of this property? And I think that based on all of this information, an appraiser is going to try to reconcile those three different, those three different results. I think ignoring any one of them isn't, isn't an option. You have three different data points, three different, you know, um, sources of evidence, evidence before you. I think you need to find a way to make all of those sort of, sort of jive together. So with that, with that said, I don't know if I can pull this up on the screen. If I, if I can't, this is also in your information, in the, um, packets of information as well. For Jefferson, it's starting on page 15 of, of that PDF that was circulated. And then for Lincoln, actually Lincoln, it's on page 15 is that, of that as well. And what, what that represents is it's essentially just a, just on kind of the top half, top half of the page. It's just sort of a, a summarization of the taxpayers income approach. What is, what's the value that's presented through that calculation? And then for the assessing department, what's the value presented for the cost approach? And then the income approach, um, as well on, on those. And, and what I've, what I've tried to do with that, and, and I actually, I do have it on, on spreadsheet form here too, just, you know, to kind of see how, how this sort of thing works. Those are a few different examples as to how you might go about reconciling, reconciling those three, those three data points. I've got a couple of particular examples. You know, maybe you equally weight the, the income approach that the taxpayer prepared, um, with the cost approach that the, that the assessing department prepared. You'd be ignoring the, you know, the city assessing department. And like I said, I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's a proper result, um, but that is one, one possibility there. The, um, you might also average, average the two income approaches, um, and then equally weight that with, with the cost approach. And that's, that's what that presents. And then it doesn't come across in the, you know, in the, in the print off here, but, but sort of in that particular weighting section, I've got things sort of equally weighted right now. And that's the result that equal weighting would do. If, if you tell me, hey, you know, I think for 2019, we should wait, you know, we should wait this, we should wait the taxpayers income approach 40%, right? And we should, you know, wait the other two, um, similarly. We can plug that in and I, I've actually, I've got it on the spreadsheet here and, um, you know, um, certainly don't kind of want to have it. Would, would, you know, if I, if I can, I'd certainly put it up on the, on the computer, on the, on the projectors here, just so you can see I'm not kind of fudging anything there. Oh, great. And really the reason, the reason for doing this is I, you know, it's like, I know. Into the wrong side. Just to show you how, how things, how things might change if you, um, you know, if you do those sorts of, sorts of different, different weightings, right? I mean, you know, obviously I can, I can tell you, um, you know, I can just, I can just kind of tell you verbally how it, how it comes through. But we can see, you know, we can see specifically how the numbers, how the numbers might change. I mean, if you feel strongly that, you know, um, you know, the, the taxpayers income approach produces a significantly different result as, as frankly in these, these calculations, they do, maybe you weight it, maybe you weight it less. Um, and we can, and we can do that. I can plug that in specifically here. You know, alternatively, again, if you, if you feel like just averaging those, as I've, as I've seen appraisals do, and maybe you have as well, that's, that's, that's the result there. But really again, I, I say all of this for two reasons. Simply to request that you engage in the same exercise that was done last year, right? I know we didn't have a, a, you know, fancy spreadsheet, not that this one is fancy or anything, but we didn't have a spreadsheet, um, you know, kind of showing how it all, how it all works out. But also in the end, you know, I think it's important that, that sort of a, a whole data approach, um, produce a result here. So with that, certainly happy to answer questions, drive the spreadsheet, um, if you'd like and, and go from there. Yes, sir. Yeah, please. Effectively done. Yep, yep. And the two properties, I'll just, I'll clarify too, the two properties, the calculations are exactly the same. Correct, correct. So, uh, we actually heard a couple, we had a couple hearings actually. At the first hearing, the city didn't have all of the information before them. The city chose to, chose to deny the abatements. And I think the record probably shows that.
Question is, is there anything new for you to present?
No, no, there isn't. No, there isn't. Again, this is essentially the same discussion that, you know, that we had last year. Um, and, and, and again, my, my request, I, I don't know that I necessarily framed it as such in prior years. But my request is simply that we do what was done last year as well.
Madam Chairman, I don't know if you want to have Joe do his little thing, but I do have several questions for, uh, Mr. Tybbs.
Yeah, correct, thank you.
Thank you. It's tough for a German guy to pronounce that name. So, um, part of my question is, and, and maybe it's a frustration with the process here, is did you have any conversations in February 2019 when you received the 2019, uh, valuation letters from the city?
At that time, um, you know, at that time we had been, I'm trying to go back, back in memory here. 2019, I actually wasn't, wasn't associated with, with this law firm. But I can tell you that we've been, um, you know, it's, it's no secret, we've been working with this taxpayer, um, these two taxpayers for, for a number of, number of years now. And, and ultimately, you know, in the end, the decision was made, um, you know, with, with last year, it had been, the decisions had been made sort of on a year by year basis. And, and our goal this year was essentially to get, to get caught up, to address the concern that I think you're getting at, right? Which is, you know, why is it, why is it that we're not, um, you know, we're making everybody go back three years, right?
Why didn't we deal with this in 2019? Exactly, okay.
Yep.
So in your, uh, presentation, you make an assumption of a cap rate of 9.75%. This, and this would be for the year of 2019. Okay. So what data do you have to support that? And I'll just, I mean, I'm in the commercial real estate arena. I would love to have had projects to present at 9.75 in 2019. And so what data, data do you have? I mean, I, I've viewed the, the data that Mr. Xander thing, and I've read as much as the, uh, portfolio that I did. I'm just trying to figure out, uh, where did you come up with that number?
Yeah, yeah, you know, and I'll, I mean, I'll admit, as is often the case, we don't necessarily have a ton of data supporting that. Really what we have is, is what I would call sort of three, um, three sources of information, right? We have, we have, uh, boy, now I'm drawing a blank as to whether it was Jefferson or Lincoln. But for one of the properties, we do have the published cap rate, um, from, from CoStar or a similar, um, uh, similar reporting service for the prior sale, which I believe had occurred in 2014. So it's old, it's old, there's no, there's no doubt about that. We do have, um, um, sort of a general, um, kind of upper Midwest market, um, um, sort of overview and trend over time, essentially showing I think between a 7.5 and an 8.5. So we have that. I'm trying to think when in terms of dates, um, precisely when that, when that ends. But it's a multi-year view. And then we also have, I believe for Lincoln, you know, I'm not going to say that because I can't, I can't confirm here. But basically at the end of the day, right, we have limited information. I certainly recognize that. And 975 is, is the number that's, it's essentially between halfway between what that published cap rate from earlier was and the trend data that we have sort of across a, you know, across the broader market over time. And with that, with that said, I mean, you know, you know, um, oh gosh, I mean, if you've got, if you've got information, I'm, I'm certainly all ears. And then I also have on my spreadsheet, I can, I can plug in a different cap rate.
Well, I, I agree that to get that data narrowed down is tough. So you really can't use a specific number, a range is always typically better. But if you did, I, I would, based on locality, because cap rates are all local as well, that it would be closer to five than it was 9.75. And if you plug in five or five and a half, um, I think you're going to come up with a number that's fairly close to where the, uh, Mr. Hirschfeld was. And, uh, a couple of other-
I mean, let's, if, I mean, if you don't mind, let me just kind of run that here. So we had, you know, so for Jefferson 2019, our approach is considering a 9.75 unloaded. So that's before, before we, you know, we factor into, to account the, the effective tax rate. And that produces through our income approach calculation. I'll see if I can blow this, blow this up a little bit here. So that's a 9.75. I mean, if we split, if we go down to a, you know, a 5.5, the valuation goes from 2.1 to 3.5.
Okay.
So for that year.
The city has you at 424.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Um, follow-up question again, I know you're not in the, the trenches managing this property, but the data you're providing shows, um, income to expense ratios of 47.5%. That would be from an industry standard significantly high. So I, I mean, your, your data doesn't show if those are loaded, you know, if you have heavy management skill or, uh, management expenses and those kinds of things. So if you brought that back to a more industry norm, I think that would help. And, um, I think, and I was just trying to look it up, I didn't get it, but I think 2019 had a pretty good occupancy rate for you.
Yeah, yeah, I think we, we ended up going down over time and I think ultimately ends up in sort of a COVID type, type situation there. But 2019 was, was, I think, you know, for both of these properties, the best of the, best of the three years.
Okay. So the, the last, and I don't want to burn up anybody's time here, but, um, I need these answers. So as part of this process, um, you know, you do an internal evaluation and you, and you have individuals do that. But at no point have, or have you ever engaged like an MI appraisal to kind of support your, so that you're hea- more heavily invested in this? Because to me, again, I think I'm a little frustrated that we're not dealing with this in 2019, we're in, went in arrears. And, uh, I think you could be much more influential with your information if you had an MI appraisal.
I, I really appreciate that. I, I do. I, I will tell you, and, and I know this isn't, this isn't your problem because I haven't heard this from, from this board. But I will tell you that we do have situations where, um, we bring in a third-party appraisal, CBRE. You know, reputable, reputable folks, right? It's not just Joe's appraisal service and, you know, Backwater, Alabama. And we get told that those appraisals are hogwash, that they're just made up. I, I'm, I'm telling honestly, honestly, that's the reception that we get with that sometimes. So it's, it's a, it's certainly a balance, right? I mean, you know, and it's obviously an investment, um, um, for the property owner to, to prepare that sort of thing. I, you know, I, I wish, I wish I could tell folks, I wish I could tell my clients that, you know, yeah, reliably, that's a good investment. You know, but, but I just, I just, I haven't seen that. In the end, you know, what we do know is that you don't need to be a licensed appraiser to, um, to speak to the value of your own property. You know, so there's no, there's no requirement, requirement there. And, and that's, and that's what we got. I, I share frustration with that. I, I really do, I really do. And, and frankly, honestly, if you told me today, you know, um, go get an appraisal, I'd be on the phone this afternoon. I really would.
Thank you. So is, do you have anything to say on this, Joe, or, um, before we, you know, kind of move to an action item here? We're doing these each individually each year, correct? Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, and like I said, I don't, I don't, I don't have anything else to really say between the two properties. That's essentially, that's essentially the extent, um, of my remarks there. If you have questions, I'm, I'm certainly happy to, happy to answer.
Excuse me, thank you, Commissioner Messer. Before I get into anything here, I guess I want to read a statement in, would be the, uh, recommendation of the, the, uh, council for the city, the commission for the city of Dickinson. And, uh, they have denied and rejected in whole or in part, the applications for abatement and refund of taxes. And it'll, this will read the same for everyone that comes up for you tonight, today. That, uh, we believe that the information provided by the Dickinson Assessment Department demonstrates that they placed a value on the proper interests in the subject's real property as defined by North Dakota statute 570204. Furthermore, we believe that the information provided by the Dickinson Assessment Department demonstrates that they have arrived at a value on the subject property that represents true and full value as defined by North Dakota statute 57020115. Uh, also by providing information relating to the subject property, including a current onsite inspection, sales of similar properties, cost approach analysis, and limited income analysis. We feel the Dickinson Assessment Department considered all factors that affect the value of the subject property. And the Dickinson Assessment Department has provided information to us relating to the valuation they have placed on properties in the community that are comparable to the subject property. They have also indicated in the information provided that the same method of valuation was applied to all similar properties in the community. And we feel that for those reasons, that the value placed on the subject property by the Dickinson Assessment Department was done so in an equitable manner. Uh, we do not feel that sufficient information provided by the applicant indicates that the assessment, uh, the Dickinson Assessment Department valuation is an error, invalid, inequitable, unjust, or arrived at in any arbitrary, capricious, or unreasonable manner. So just a statement from the, uh, city commission. And, uh, I've got a little bit I can say too, but certainly if you've got questions, direct questions for me, we can start with that and go from there. So, Mr. Messer, did you have a-
You're pointing at me?
I have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, uh, for the record, there is a applicant has an appeal process following, um, following this, uh, hearing, should they not accept the findings of this board? Is that correct? There's another step along the way that, um, resource that the applicant would have is that-
And, and certainly, and, and just to make sure we're all on the page here, and, and for those who are listening in or whatever, there, there's the informal process, which, uh, the city Dickinson did, uh, a few weeks ago with the, uh, the Board of Equalization meeting. We'll be doing that here in June before you as well. Uh, the state Board of Equalization hearing is in August. And so at any one of those steps, the property owner can come before those boards and seek relief. Finding none, then that starts the formal process, which is the abatement process that was heard at the, uh, the city and which we're doing right now. Following that, if they don't find relief to their satisfaction, then they can, uh, 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 appeal to the district court then, and that would be the next step after this.
Yep, I guess Joe, my only, uh, my only comment would be, I think everyone would agree, includes, including Mr. Tybbs, that the, uh, valuation process in a market that doesn't have a lot of good solid sales, comparable sales is, is a difficult one. I guess I looked at the numbers based on the, uh, questions that, uh, that I rose based on, uh, cap rates and, uh, expense to income ratios. I, I, I think you're very close on these. I think we've shown as a board, the ability to look at all the data and come up with a reasonable, uh, conclusion. And I don't know if anybody doesn't have any questions, I'm ready to make a motion.
And, and, and because we're at the beginning of this process, we're going to hear several more. One other point I do want to make, as much for the record as anything that because of some of the, the concerns of the property owners today and past years catching up with the down market, we did go ahead and, uh, get the assistance of Vanguard Appraisals Company to kind of do a backup check to where we were going with our values. I mean, we were comfortable with where we were at, but you know, we just weren't getting ahead of it because the market, every year we'd get to where the market is, it was leaping further, you know, downward even further. And so we did, did, uh, hire them to come in and give us a recommendation. it was leaping further, you know, downward even further. And so we did, did, uh, hire them to come in and give us a recommendation. Uh, we were very comfortable with their recommendation and very happy with how the, uh, that turned out, you know, based on the sales we did have. So we're just reading that into the record and of course, open any further questions in that regard as well, but.
Yeah. I mean, the valuation in this property has gone from seven point two million in 2015 to five point six in 16, four point four in 17, actually four million in, uh, 18, which was the agreed to amount. So, um, hearing, uh, none other, I would move that we, uh, accept the, uh, City of Dickinson's value, true and fa- uh, full value recommendation for Jefferson Creek for the year of 2019 of four point two eight four million seven hundred, four million two hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been approved and seconded. Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
We've got two for nineteen, Jefferson and Lincoln. So do you want to do both of them? And then move on to the 2020s and then the 2021s?
Okay.
Or however you guys would like to do it.
Okay, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would move that, uh, the, we accept the valuation from the, uh, City of Dickinson on true and full value for the Lincoln Apartments for 2019 at seventeen million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred dollars.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Sorry.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander? Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Okay, on to the 2020s.
Does Mr. Tibble want to present any data or, or just the culmination of everything? Okay. So, Madam Chairman, I would move that the, um, Stark County accept the City of Dickinson's true and full recommended, recommendation value on Jefferson Creek for the year 2020 of four million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. We'll do a roll call vote of Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander? Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would move that, uh, we, Stark County, accept the City of Dickinson's true and full value on Lincoln Apartments for the year 2020 for seventeen million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander? Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Do you want to move into 2021?
One.
Madam Chairman, I would move that Stark County accept the City of Dickinson's recommended true and full value for Jefferson Creek, uh, twenty, for the year 2021, four million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars.
I have a motion. Need a second? Okay, I have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
And for Madam Chairman, um, I would move that Stark County accept the City of Dickinson's true and full value on Lincoln, Lincoln Apartments for the year 2021 of seventeen million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred dollars.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Marsh. Roll call vote, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you.
Chris Stafford, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Lovely. Thank you. I wasn't coming through before Mr. Tibble sent me an email. So, uh, thank you, David.
Okay, you can go ahead and present what you would like to say to the board and then we'll see what Joe's comments are.
Thank you. Uh, good morning Commissioners. Um, I won't, uh, repeat, uh, what, uh, Mr. Tibble's laid out in terms of the basis of this. Uh, you know that we're here to figure out the true and full value of the subject property, the market value, what it would actually exchange for in sales. Uh, you understand the income, cost and sales comparison approaches. Uh, the property that I'm representing today is a hotel. Uh, and we've submitted an income approach analysis, uh, in support of our application for abatement. That income approach analysis, uh, considers five years of the hotel's own finances. And averages out, we average them out over time. We look at five years, the last three years, the prior three years to try to figure out what a good, um, number would be for, uh, the abatement, uh, especially to try to level out any changes, uh, that might have varied from year to year and kind of account for any bumps in income. Uh, and we landed on, uh, our request to the board is a reduction in the, uh, assessment from where it is at about three point five million, which is about, uh, works out to about forty-two thousand, five hundred per room. And we're asking for a reduction to one million, eight hundred and ten thousand, which works out to about, uh, twenty-eight thousand, three hundred per room. Now, we all, we did an income approach because that's the data we had. And we only relied on our own income, the income for the hotel itself, because that's the data we had. Uh, and we did our best with, uh, trying to figure out what the, uh, you know, uh, looking at a broader period of time in order to give it as much accuracy as we could, uh, with the, uh, with the data that we had. Uh, but we'll acknowledge, I mean, it's, it's just simply true that the City Assessor's Office has more data than we do. And, uh, and that data was shared with Vanguard Appraisals, which did in 2019, uh, a revaluation of all the properties in the City of Dickinson and put together the CANA system that kicked out this number for, uh, our hotel at three point five million. Now, I think Vanguard did a pretty good job. I do. Uh, but it's still a model. It's a master appraisal model. And every model, or how good, it's been perfect. It, it has, it's around the edge. Some are, you know, it, it got, it's probably spot on the average. Like it's going to have some that are too high and some that are too low. And I think we are in the category of properties that are too high. I'm not criticizing the model and I'm not criticizing what the assessor's office did. But I am saying that in this case, looking at a single valuation date in time of February 2019, that this property would not have sold to three point five million on that date. Now, in your packet of materials, you should have a thirteen page letter, uh, from Vanguard Appraisals to Mr. Hirschfeld. Uh, the letter is undated, but it does reference a September twenty fifth, twenty eighteen contract as the first line. And that letter, uh, on page, starting on page seven, goes through the information that Vanguard considered when it put together its hotel and houses. Like I said, this is the information that the assessor's office has that we don't. But I think our analysis is pretty consistent with what Vanguard looked at. So on page seven of this letter, uh, we didn't, so, way of practice, like I said, we only put together an income approach. We didn't have enough sales to look at. And because we don't know what our competitors are doing, they, they don't like sharing their profit and loss statements with us for some reason. Um, we don't have good information on what other hotels are making, but the assessor's office does. Vanguard considered it. So with respect to the sales comparison approach, Vanguard looked at two sales that occurred in twenty eighteen and a number of four listings of hotels for sale. Uh, listings, it would always be preferable, of course, to have a completed transaction, but those listings still give us some useful information. Uh, they say what the sellers thought they could get out there in the marketplace. You know, they, they probably, it probably sets the ceiling for what it would sell for because the buyer would come in and, and they could counter off usually, right? Uh, seller doesn't want to price themselves out of the market. These listings represent the seller's best guess of what they could hope to get. Now, between these two sales and four listings, they range from about eight grand per room, twenty-nine, five, five hundred per room. We're assessed at about, uh, about forty-two, five hundred per room. So about one and a half times listing, about two and a half times what the average of these sales are. And what we're asking for is an abatement down to about twenty-eight, three hundred per room, which is right on the extreme high end of these sales and listings, the highest of which is twenty-nine, five. Well above the average is six points that Vanguard selected. We're right at the very top data points. We're within them, the high end. Assessments play outside them, higher than them. I don't see how any of the sales data assessments had, you know, forty-two, uh, grand a room. The highest listing they had for a hotel that was, you know, built in twenty twelve, just a couple of years within hours. But with about the same number of rooms, uh, the highest listing was for twenty-nine, five for all approach data that the, that Vanguard considered. As I said, all we had was our own P and L's, but, uh, Vanguard was able to look at more P and L's throughout the marketplace. Uh, on page eight, Vanguard lists three hotels. It, it's them, right? Because this information is confidential, so I don't know what hotels. And again, we're asking for about twenty-eight, three hundred per room. We're right in line with the average of what we put together in an income approach analysis. And I'd also like to point out, and this is something that I found troubling, uh, at the city level. And actually, Mr. Hirschfeld asked for more time in order to track down the answer. Now, they use the word statements plural. There were at least two. So Vanguard looked at three statements, set aside at least two of them, two others. So there were at least five statements that the assessor's office had and maybe more, I don't know. Uh, I know there were at least two that Vanguard set aside because they were from hotels that were profitable. I don't know if they actually set aside two or three or eighteen. Uh, but they set aside at least forty percent of the income data that had been provided to them. You have to look at the whole in order to get a good sense of how many people are actually coming in, what you can actually expect to make at a hotel. So I still don't have a good answer for why Vanguard- the sales and income evidence that we do have for Vanguard. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Joe, do you want, have any comments? You're good.
So, I mean, the only comment I would make regarding the cap rate comment is each commercial arena, and I think Joe acknowledges, has a different set of cap. I would, I would agree that, uh, cap rates on, uh, hotel motels is a higher, a higher number. But when you deal in some of these other arenas, if we were looking back at, for example, the last applicants, that it is a lower number. So just FYI.
Anybody got any questions for Joe or Chris Stafford?
What were the, um, the three? Trying to find them now.
Seven?
Yeah, you had a couple of, uh, sales in here.
So I apologize if I'm interrupting anybody. I've got the volume on my phone turned off.
Oops, I'm sorry.
And I, I can't, if somebody's asking me a question, I can't hear.
Okay. Uh, this question is for Joe. Uh, just trying to identify the, um, last four properties on page seven. I mean, okay.
And, Madam Chairperson, Commissioner Messer, is that from the Vanguard?
Yes.
And I, I don't apologize that, that I've been out of, out of the office all week and then with the change in the, in the time, I didn't bring everything with me. So I'm not sure all the data that you're going to ask regarding that. Uh, my, my comments fall more around being able to support the work that Vanguard did, that they were accurate. And Mr. Stafford brings up some great questions. Uh, I really wish he'd have been there in 2019 to bring those questions up when Mr. Aller, the President of Vanguard, gave his presentation. I don't recall all the comments that were made and, you know, or, you know, regarding all of this. And so kind of at a disadvantage, three years down the road here, would have enjoyed having, uh, the home stays income as part of that valuation. It wasn't. And so we get three years down the road and, you know, a- as Mr. Stafford went on to discuss, you know, there, we have a model. It catches, you know, a, a large chunk of the properties very accurate, accurately. But there are, are outliers. It could be lower, it could be higher. With this property specifically, it could be either one. It could be spot on. But what I want to point out is the, the accuracy that Vanguard had and, uh, the slideshow that we presented earlier, and it's the same, there's no difference from what, uh, Ms. Waller sent to before, other than I paged numbered this one here because I don't have my slideshow in front of me to put on top, on, on the screen there. But it would be Dickinson Hotel Sales Ratio. And so following the recommendation that Vanguard had given us, during 2019, there were two apartments or two, excuse me, hotel sales, because we're speaking to the, to the home stay here. Uh, one of those was for a little more than true, true and full value. One of them was for a little less. The median, and we worked towards median, as Ms. Waller will tell you, was a one hundred point five percent. So based on these two data points, Vanguard nailed it. I mean, you can't get any closer to a hundred percent, which is our valuation target. And we do get, uh, a little leeway down to ninety. But I mean, when, when you want to know how accurate Vanguard's, uh, assessment was or their recommendation, this is it. And in contrast there, you see what the, uh, the home stay is asking for on their, uh, application for abatement. So they're, they're well outside of the range of what these two sales were. And then as far as further accuracy, uh, the last page, uh, page eighteen are the apartments. And, and so all of the apartments for 2019 and 2020 sold for less than the one hundred percent ratio. So they actually sold for more than their assessed value. And in 2021, half of them were, were stronger yet. And then there were a couple that were just above. I do want to note that the, the highest, uh, little blue dot there, if it would have sold for twelve thousand or it would have been at a hundred percent. So a very low value property that easily affected, uh, affects the ratio by any difference in value. So, I mean, the accuracy on the recommendation Vanguard give with, gave was just phenomenal. We were very happy with, with what they did. And then of course, uh, no changes because of COVID in 2020, but that for this property would be for another time. So, uh, we've got that to point to. I'll also want to call out that, uh, the State Tax Commission, State Board- I'll also want to call out that, uh, the state tax commission, state board, has a set of guidelines for its assessors and tax directors. Guideline twenty-six, uh, suggests using a gross income multiplier. We've been talking about a cap rate. Cap rates are very accurate, they're, they're great for lenders, uh, because there's a lot of risk on the lender who's lending seventy, eighty percent on this. For ad of law and taxation, we're looking at how much taxes a property should pay to support their fire, their police, their roads. And so the accuracy maybe doesn't need to be the same for what we're doing here as it is for a lender who's got that kind of exposure. But the, the data before you there, and I don't have a page here to show, like I said, it's in the binder that I forgot to bring, apologize for that. But th- these two sales had a, uh, gross income multiplier of one point six and one point nine. So they were on the lower end of the range, but other additional information we had, uh, supplied to us showed a, a range from, from the mid to high ones up to the mid fours. And the value that the, uh, the home stay has on it right now would support a gross income multiplier of a three. So we fall within that range too. So, I mean, we've got several data points that suggest that the recommendation made, that the true and full value is accurate and supportable and not outside, the typical, you know, first standard deviation, if you will. And I mean, we're getting into the assessor jargon now.
So, um, why isn't some of this data provided for them when they're, when we're work, you're working together with the abatements?
Uh, the, the information that Mr. Stafford's asking for is specifically Vanguard's. All, I mean, they, they were given what you have here.
Okay.
And so they have that, but he has the additional questions that I can't answer because I didn't do the work.
Okay.
And so would have to get in contact with Ms. Ailer, wasn't able to do that in a timely manner. I mean, he's got to go back in his records and find that. But specifically, Mr. Stafford suggests that I was asking for time to get that. It was actually time to, to pull this slide up because, uh, if you had an opportunity to watch the, the video, Commissioner Oderman was there, requested this slide for the apartments, which came first. He had had to leave for, for family commitment, wasn't there. So I just wanted to give, uh, his recommendation for that to this property here as well. So that was what I wanted, the additional time to put this slide together for, for Commissioner Oderman, the other commissioners as well, to show that there was support from what Vanguard did and that they were accurate in their recommendation.
So the nonprofitable ones?
Can I respond to, uh, yeah, sorry, I did not mean to interrupt the commissioner.
No, go ahead, you're okay.
I was just wondering if I could respond to some of, uh, Mr. Hirschfeld's points, but if you've still got a question for him, I'm premature.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, so Mr. Hirschfeld has raised three things that I want to, uh, to bring up. First of all, uh, the gross income multiplier. The two sales that occurred in 2018 had gross income multipliers of one point six and one point nine. Uh, Mr. Hirschfeld has said that he's got data showing gross income multipliers that go as high as four, but he hasn't provided that to this commission, nor did he provide it to the city, nor has he provided it to me in any of our conversations. It's, it's purely hypothetical until there's actually a data point to support that. Regardless, uh, if you use the gross income multiplier of one point six on our subject property, you get an assessment of about two point one million. You use a gross income multiplier of one point nine, you get up to about two point five million. Both of those are much lower than the, uh, assessment of three point five million. And if you want to stick me with a two point five million dollar assessment today because that matches the gross income multiplier of the sales, I'd be thrilled with it. Um, with respect to the sales themselves, um, Mr. Hirschfeld noted that they, they came in right at the median, and that's great. Uh, that means that the model worked for those two hotels valued, uh, which sold at about seventeen grand a room and at about eight grand a room. We're assessed at forty-two grand a room. Uh, those two sales, consistent with the assessment, a little higher or a little lower, uh, does not mean that our forty-two thousand dollar a room assessment is accurate. It just means that those two were accurate. Uh, uh, Mr. Hirschfeld that he wished that we had brought up some of these points in 2019. And if I may be perfectly candid, uh, I've represented clients who have gone through the informal process prior to filing a formal application for abatement, and I've had clients that have declined to go through the informal process prior to applications for abatement. When we decline to go through the informal process, we hear, where were you three years ago? He goes through the process, we hear, you were here three years ago, why are you here again? There is nothing correct that the taxpayer can do with, with respect to the informal process. If we participate, we're asked why we're here again. If we fail to participate, we're asked why we didn't participate. Uh, it's a lose-lose. Um, and I don't think it has any bearing on the actual question, which is what is true and full value of the property as of February first, 2019? Thank you.
And Madam Chairperson, if I can respond to that. I mean, simply, uh, for, for this very reason. I mean, he's asking for a value on his property located on one of the premier locations in Dickinson along the interstate there, a newer property, to be valued with the same consideration of one that overlooks, uh, well, no longer BJ Services in Halliburton. But, I mean, that's the location, one of the sales, right next to Max. So, I mean, not a premier location, a low amenity hotel. And the other one was the Comfort Inn, so, you know, much older, you know, without the amenities and everything that goes with an old, older hotel. So he's, he's trying to say his isn't worth any more than that and, you know, and he has nothing to prove that. I mean, that's kind of where we're at, that catch twenty-two, how much information do you have? Well, the information I have is with the, the sales that I do have is that we were spot on. He's trying to throw as much, you know, cloud upon th- this valuation as possible to the benefit, fit of his client, and that's understood. Uh, I, I disagree that, you know, not supplying the information that you can initially, i- is to their downfall. I think the more information that you provide upfront, the more accurate my valuation can be. I mean, it's, it's quite possible that if his property's worth as little as he thinks it is, that, that would have played into this valuation, and he may have had a lower valuation. On the other hand, it might have played into a higher valuation. We can do the what-if all day long. But I, I, I show you what I have, this is the support I have.
I guess that's.
Was the non, oh, sorry, Neil.
Oh, go ahead.
Was the nonprofitable ones, those were taken off? That Mr. Stafford talks about?
Uh, I, I think his concern is that when Vanguard's gave their opinion of value, which is, you know, their, their, their assessment of it, that they should, more weight should have been placed on those two, or minimum of two sales that had a negative incomes. The, the, the problem with negative incomes on an income approach is that you're then saying that it has negative value and we're supposed to pay them for them. And that's not accurate, there's still value in the land. And so at that point, the, the income approach really has no bearing on the value of the property at all. Quite possibly, it means that that property needs to be raised and no longer raised to R A Z E D, you know, destroyed, and returned to, to just a, to a lot, which would still have value. And, and so it, it's quite typical in the appraisal field that information like that maybe runs in the back of your head. I think the comments mean that if these sales don't come out like they did, say that median on those two sales was a hundred and twenty-five, that, well, shoot, we should have placed a little more weight on the income and we, we could be a little bit lower. I think that's kind of where those comments are going, that's how I would have written it up. I probably wouldn't have used them or put a lot of weight on them either. And, you know, it, it's an opinion of value that they gave, and, and their opinion worked out fabulously on both the apartments and the hotels. I mean, y- you can't overlook that. They, if we were at a hundred and twenty-five percent, two hundred percent, absolutely, Mr. Stafford's spot on that we should have done something different. But that's not how the data turned out.
And just to follow up to my question to you.
Make one comment on that.
Go ahead, Mr. Stafford.
I, I, I believe that in Mr. Hirschfeld's explanation of, uh, whether or not to consider those, uh, unprofitable hotels, there's being a conflation of mass appraisal and individual appraisal. I agree individual money-losing hotel, you might as well blame management. Or it might well have a different highest and best use and need to be torn down and replaced with something else. But when Vanguard was building its model, it wasn't looking at valuing each hotel individually, it was looking at ostensibly, what is the entire market like? Do that occupancy percentage from the good hotels and the bad hotels? Because overall, the hotel profit, hotel industry in Dickinson is profitable, or else there would be no hotels in Dickinson. So you look at the whole group, how many rooms are there available? How many people stayed there? What were they willing to pay on average? In the good hotels and the bad hotels, sure, the failing hotels will have a lower occupancy percentage. The good hotels will have a higher occupancy percentage, but you average that out to figure out how many people are showing up in the first place. And by ignoring the data from the failing hotels without explanation for why it's appropriate to do so, and with and you had the opportunity since January thirty-first to contact Vanguard and ask why they made that decision. And there's been no effort to answer. And Mr. Hirschfeld is here today with speculation about why they might have done it. We could have had the answer by now. It's been three months. But for whatever reason, we still don't have that answer, and I can't provide that answer, only the assessor can. Only Vanguard can. All we know is that they ignored market data and didn't give us a reason. Thank you.
And Madam Chairman, if I may, just to, Chairperson, I'm sorry, to, to comment to that is i- it's not pertinent. I mean, Vanguard came up with the information they did. His statements there, you know, about looking at all the data is accurate. But to be candid with you, candid to the, the continuation of this process wherever it may go, i- in my eleven or twelve years I've been here, if a property doesn't return their income to me, it means they're doing well. It's the ones that don't return their, or that do return their income to me that are struggling. And that's just, just been my observation. And, and so when they're told, don't share your information, and I, there, there's twenty-two hotels in town, and if we got three that were usable and two, maybe three, and we can speculate all day on that, we're at, what, fifteen, twenty percent return? So i- if he doesn't like the data, supply us with the data. It's, it's quite.
But you have the data. Vanguard has the data.
Well, the, the, the request went out to all twenty-two hotel owners. But there was a maximum of five that returned it, and his was not one of them. So the, the data's limited, so he's not happy with what the data showed, even though they didn't participate. And so now he's looking for something to, different to happen.
Minimum of five. We don't know how many Vanguard declined to consider. Minimum five.
Is that true?
Uh, a minimum of five, yes, three that were used, the two that weren't, that's twenty-five percent. So we can speculate the rest of the day, that was the data that they had. They made an opinion on that, were required to do that by the second week of, uh, of April every year. Well, we can't leave it open-ended waiting for somebody to supply us data.
Just moving on from that topic to the one I had asked you about before. And the reason I'd asked for those last four, uh, sales in 2018, because there was a disparity in the, uh, per unit number, I had an assumption, you confirmed it, that the sale for, that had a value of twenty-nine, five per room was the Red Roof Inn. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if you go and take a, I mean, just walk through the halls of Red Roof Inn and walk through the halls of, uh, Mr. Stafford's property he's representing, there's a significant difference, that would address the issues that Mr. Tybalt, uh, brought forth before. That would address the, the, the cost issue of replacement cost. I mean, his head and shoulders from evaluation, cosmetically, structurally, and those, those kind of things. So, uh, that's why I was asking, because there was almost fifty percent difference in, uh, per room or per key, however you want to identify it, uh, values, so, uh, and that number is still higher than what he's requesting. So he, uh, Mr. Stafford's requesting twenty-eight, three per room, I believe, is what I wrote in my notes. And, uh, that the Red Roof was twenty-nine, five, so, anyway. My, that's my only comment.
And, uh, Commissioner Messer, that's an astute observation that, again, the data we had probably tended to show the lower quality properties, which Mr. Stafford's, when he's representing, is certainly not. So it's superior to just about everything, everything that we've seen.
And what was yours, what was that, um, per room, forty-two, five? Fourth, or forty-two thousand, five hundred?
I believe that'd be correct, yes.
Uh, if I may, uh, interject once more, um, Feld provided me with the property record card for the, uh, Red Roof Inn and the property record card, of course, for my property. Both of them are graded at a quality of four plus ten, which leads to a multiplier of one point six four. Uh, what exactly that means is a little obscure based on the Vanguard system. But what I can tell you is that based on and the City of Dickinson's own analysis, the Red Roof and my property are of the same quality.
Are we ready for a motion? Okay, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would move that Stark County accept the City of Dickinson's true and full value for the home stay property for the year 2019 of three million, five hundred, twenty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars. One second.
This is for 2019?
Yes.
Okay, I had a motion in a second. Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Frachek?
Aye.
Chair of Witsai, motion carried.
Uh, you can make your.
Madam Chairperson, Commissioners, thank you.
We need do we want to accept the bids, Sir Allen?
So we reviewed the paving bids and, uh, no math errors. So the, uh, low bid for the sum of all three projects was Mayo Construction, one million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars, um, and zero cents. So we would recommend awarding to, to Mayo. You look at the subdivisions, they were pretty much what we had estimated. Hundred sixteenth was a little bit higher. I think we were sort of anticipating a little better, uh, production on one sixteenth. But, um, as a total, it's about five percent over what our estimate was, but that's pretty reasonable, actually.
So we can't, we can't segregate these out and?
No, it was, it was solicited as one contract.
Why do we do that, solicit it out as one, when we have such lower ones?
We essentially wanted to divvy them up to see what the unit prices are for each subdivision, essentially. So invent that one of the subdivisions or one sixteenth was exceptionally high, we would eliminate it. But they're all reasonably close to what our estimate was.
What was the difference between Mayo and whoever was next?
It was about forty thousand dollars. From the low bid to the second low bid.
Forty, you said?
Forty-two thousand, roughly.
In your judgment, that's pretty competitive, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, the first and the second within forty-two thousand, so they were, you know, within four percent of each other, that's pretty competitive.
My view, that's good, that they're our competitive bids.
Yeah, you know. Yeah, you know, as, as the engineer kind of tells me, they were looking at the same set of plans and there wasn't much confusion on what the scope of work was. There's always going to be an oddball bid that bidder that throws in a number, to be honest with you. But when you get the low bids that are close like that, it tells me they're just looking at the same set of plans.
So it would be in order then to, uh, the low bid? Mayor?
Mayo Construction.
What was that total?
So my motion include that number? Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Just one real quick follow up question. So I, I'm just struggling a little bit why we wouldn't have, and Al, I don't, if you could chime in. I know you, you, when you put it together, you put it together. I understand that. Is that typically how you would have done a, a set of projects this way?
I was kind of curious to see where these, these subdivisions come in. You know, that 116th is kind of straight up paving, but, and the numbers are where they are.
Okay.
And we've got some numbers from Northern in May we took from Missland's paving. The oil has considerably gone up now. So I think all in all, it's a pretty good number.
So it's your recommendation we go for. Okay.
Okay. Roll call vote. Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Next, we have the, the policy to talk about. Ken, you had put, or Commissioner Xander, you'd put the item of the HR policy on discussion?
Thanks for bringing that up. I, I brought it up because it's one of those items that, and I think there's others that over the past months have been tabled. And, and I'm just, my point being, if we're tabling something, we're tabling it for a reason, but that.
It's still out there. And so my only point is, is that, is that I know staff and at least one commissioner had put a lot of effort into this. And so I, I'm just asking that we address this for action at our June meeting?
Okay. We will make sure it's on the agenda. Anybody else from, want to speak?
Clarence Toohey, Stark County resident. Last year, there was a issue brought up about longevity that was supposed to be paid back by the end of December. And my understanding is that it was not, everything was paid back. And I was just kind of wondering where this is at, because it's the middle of the following year already.
There was a motion in a second made by this board. And then I think you could talk to Ms. Inglestead about that, as it was followed through with this board.
As far as?
Of the motion in the second forum to be paid back. And I think Ms. Ms. Inglestead is taking it up, is taking care of it.
Okay, good enough. It's all.
Or you could talk to me privately if you'd like.
What?
Because I'd be happy to visit with you about it.
Well, this year was brought up, where we're supposed to get paid back by the end of the year. And it is, and it's.
We, we know what your point of being up here is, Clarence. And I'll be happy, and I'll make a motion that we adjourn. And I'll be happy to sit down with you and the state's attorney if you'd like.
I, I guess it's something that the public should know.
Yeah.
And there hasn't been anything in the public.
Well, I'll go to the Dickinson press with it if.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Let's just address Mr. Toohey's thing. So yeah, the, the point I want to make is there was four longevity's issues. Was there four?
Four.
So we are missing one. And that's obviously, that, that conversation hadn't that way. But just so that the public knows that the, the motion was passed and there is one left to deal with.
Right.
I, I really don't think we needed to save in that, but. Need a second for adjournment, please?
Second.
All in favor?